I'd like to call the meeting of the November 13, 2018, meeting of the Board of Selectment to Order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone also recording. A representative from the Telegram is making an audio recording. Anyone else? Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands One Nation, Under God, Individual Liberty and Justice as well.
Our first agenda item is public comment. No one has signed up for that, so we'll move right on to our public hearings and presentations. We have a 7:00 PM tax classification hearing, which we will first have a presentation. Board members will have an opportunity to ask any questions they may have regarding the presentation. I will then open it up for public comment. I will close public comment. Board members will have an opportunity to discuss the public comment. We will close the hearing and take action on the votes we need to take. This evening, I know that in the past we've had some -- people feel passionately about this issue, shall I say. So I'm going to ask everyone to please be respectful. If there are any personal comments towards individual board members, and also if there are any comments made to any business owners or residents, I will declare that you're out of order and ask you to sit down. So let's keep our comments respectful and positive, okay? So I'm going to turn it over to the town. Yes.
First of all, I'd like to make a motion to open the hearing on tax classification.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tax classification is open. So Ms. Jacobson, I'm going to turn it over to you to make introductions.
Thank you. This evening, we have with us our Town Assessor Cindy Causgrove and the Assistant Assessor Seth Willard, who is going to be making the presentation this evening. So as you mentioned, Madam Chair, we will present our -- give our presentation on the tax classification and then have the board ask any questions after that. So Seth, turn over to you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight, and thank you for allowing me to present the fiscal '19 tax classification. I would ask that all questions and comments be held to the end of the presentation, and with that, I'll get going. So just an introduction. The calculations for the tax rate and other numbers are estimated as of the time of preparation. There may be additional informational slides, including in the handouts that are not part of tonight's presentation. The purpose of the classification hearing is under Mass. General Law Chapter 40, allows a shift in the tax burden between the property classes. This does not change the total levy for the community; it simply determines the share to be borne by each class. What the classification hearing doesn't do -- the classification hearing does not determine the tax rate for the town; it only determines the distribution. Classification does not determine how much money can be raised. Town meeting voters determine what the levy will be. Your tax rate. The tax levy is determined by the town meeting appropriations and expenditures, state and county charges. It is paid for by using town revenues, excise, fees, enterprise and other available funds, total taxable real estate and personal property, state aid and reimbursements, new growth, debt exclusions and overrides. The role of the assessor is to value property for the purpose of equitable taxation and administer abatements and exemptions. Administer abatements and exemptions, be a resource to the taxpayer, and explain the classification options to the select board. The overview of the revaluation process. Residential properties -- properties are adjusted annually to full and fair market value. Attributes affecting value include style, condition, interior and exterior features and sizes. Commercial industrial properties, values are based on an income approach to value per the Department of Revenue requirements. Personal property is determined by net book value minus depreciation. There are four votes at the classification hearing. The residential factor shifts the tax rate between the residential and commercial properties. Open space discount shifts the tax burden within the residential classes to discount open spaces. Residential exemptions shifts the burden within the residential classes, and the small commercial exemption shifts the burden within the commercial and industrial classes to give it a discount to qualifying properties. The percentage of the levy for property classes fiscal 2008 versus 2019, it's kind of a graph there, 2018 -- I mean, I'm sorry, 2008, there was 73% residential. 2017, 2019, there's roughly 72%. The tax levy. The levy limit is the amount the town can levy in a given year. So it's last year's levy plus new growth plus 2.5%. The maximum allowable levy is the levy limit plus debt exclusions plus overrides. And the excess levy capacity is the levy limit minus the actual levy. Fiscal year '19 levy limit calculations. The fiscal year 2018 levy limit was $43,089,839. The fiscal '19 2.5% allowable levy increase is $1,772,460,000. The fiscal '19 new growth was $656,765,000, and fiscal '19 proposition 2.5 override was zero. So the 2019 levy limit was $44,823,850,000. The fiscal '19 debt exclusion was $3,437,37,000, and the fiscal '19 maximum allowable Fiscal '19, what factors drive the rate increases? Increase in the excluded debt for Auburn Middle School for the upcoming fiscal year. Demolitions and depreciations. Properties going off the tax rolls and/or decreasing in value due to demolition from snow damage, fire damage, or other age. Average home in Auburn is 60 years old. The Auburn Mall is continuing construction, and resulting in vacancies at the Auburn Mall suppress the value because of the current construction going on right now. Fiscal '19 growth trends include residential growth is down. It's stable, but it's not being skewed by individual properties as much. Commercial growth is up. Numbers can be affected annually by one significant new property or addition. Industrial growth is stable, slightly up. Numbers can be affected annually by one significant property or addition. This is the fourth year of very low industrial growth. Personal property growth is up. Numbers are volatile. New growth from businesses moving in and out of town has returned to kind of a more normal level this year. And this is kind of a slide right here of a new growth four-year trend, kind of looking back at it. And that's why I touched on a little bit on the previous slide. You can see the personal property in the blue is kind of more stabilized at a normal rate. The industrial in the red is very small. The commercial is up a little bit this year, and '19 is heading up, and the residential's kind of stagnant to slightly down. Notable growth changes. Residential growth, new condo complexes and residential development create a spike. That's kind of maturing in the Auburn market. Commercial industrial growth are slightly up, and personal property is up. The residential percentage due to revaluation from fiscal '18 to fiscal '19, you can see on this slide here, vacant land is up probably the most. Single-family, again, remains stable. Condos are up. So the overall residential change was 3.99%. Equalizing the fiscal '19 rate and value change. So in fiscal '17, the average property value, if we take a $200,000 property, the tax bill, the actual dollar amount, was $3,688,000, and that was at a tax rate of $18.44. If you look at the fiscal '18 equalized value of $208,252,000, same tax bill at $3,668,000, the resulting rate would equal out to $17.71. So the overall residential value change from all properties due to revaluation, single-family, multifamily condos, was a positive 4.126%. And values may have changed at different rates for different types of properties. So a vote on the residential discount. Up to 20% discount to owner-occupant residential properties shifts the burden from the less expensive homes onto the higher-priced homes and the non-resident homes. Works in the communities with large amounts of vacation homes or non-owner-occupant homes -- properties to shift the burden onto. A vote on the small commercial exemption. The final vote for the Board of Selectment is the commercial exemption. No effect on the residential and personal property. Industrial properties do not qualify, but share in the tax burden. The exemption goes to the property owner of a commercial property if they qualify, not the business. It relies on the trickle-down effect. So just to expand on the small commercial exemption a little bit, it is for multi-business properties. All must qualify. In other words, if you have a strip mall, all the businesses in the strip mall must qualify. The assessed value of the parcel must be less than $1 million, and each business that is located on that parcel must employ 10 employees or less. Continuing with the small commercial exemption, the assessors must go through the list of businesses from the Department of Workforce Development and qualify each property by the business located there. The businesses not on the list must be DBAs to qualify by the assessor. Small incorporated businesses must be on the list. Each year, all properties not on the list need to refile applications with the assessor. If the small commercial exemption is enacted, it shifts the tax rate up to 10% by annual vote between the properties occupying the qualifying small business onto the other commercial and industrial properties. Applications are taken after the tax classification hearing, and processing can delay setting the tax rate. Any exemptions not processed prior to the submission of the recap will impact the overlay And as you can see here, here's a slide applying the exemption to Auburn. If you had a CPI shift of 1.10, the commercial industrial would be -- the rate would be 2184, personal property would be 2173. The difference is .11. The CPI shift selected represent the break points where the tax rate difference changes and assumes the exempted value is similar to that of fiscal '18. You can see applying the exemption to Auburn. These are some valuations here, and the tax qualification for exemption would be as follows. So you can kind of read down that list. And the chart assumes current shift of 1.20, and the current exemption of 10% for the commercial industrial tax rate calculation. This is just kind of a snapshot of the historic trends of the CPI split. You can see in 2006, it was 1.62, and seemed to diminish, you know, throughout the years. And since 2014, '15, and '16, it was at 1.22 for several years. In the last couple of fiscal years, it has been at 1.2. These are kind of commercial industrial, personal property growth trends as the factors have changed. Take a look at this slide. And one thing to note at the bottom is, over the fiscal years, what the actual -- the split was. And you can see at the larger split at the bottom, coming forward all the way to the most past couple of years at the 1.2. So the commercial and new growth as a percentage of total growth has kind of stabilized over the last few years, and the residential growth as a percentage of total growth has been fairly stable over the last couple of years as well. This is the CPI growth trends as factors have changed. You can see throughout the years, the total new growth applied to the levy limits, 2004 Again, I think the column to take a look at is the one on the far right, the CPI shift The commercial industrial full fair cash value compared to the shifted percent. Again, this is a chart representing a snapshot of fiscal 2006 as compared to fiscal 2018. You can see the shifts involved there. This is a slide that you might want to pay particular attention to. This is the 2018 cost to do business in Worcester County, and you can see a lot of the towns are fairly similar with their tax rates on the left side of the graph. Shrewsbury, Oxford, Millbury, Grafton hovering somewhere around the 16s, 17s. And you can see on the right side, Worcester has a split tax rate, and that is their commercial rate, 3403 per thousand, and Auburn is 2418. So that is something to note for the commercial rates. This is a rate chart for fiscal '19. And the rate chart does assume the 10% small commercial exemption will be granted for this year. And the fiscal '18 residential rate was 1844 per thousand, and the commercial industrial This is a slide that is pretty important. You want to just key in on the impact of the splitting of the tax rate on the average property. So these are average fiscal '19 values. You can see the average residential property on the left side of the slide is $263,290 in Auburn for fiscal '19. And if you see, as you can see, as you move the shift, it would create these different tax scenarios for the residential. The taxes at 1.0 would be $5,199, 1.1 would be $4,997, so on and so forth. And the average fiscal '19 commercial value was $1,145,873. And you can also see the shift, what the resulting taxes would be based on the shift at the top of the graph. At 1.0, it would be $22,745,000. At 1.16, it would be $26,398,000. At 1.17, it would be $26,619,000. And you can just kind of follow the -- if you have the presentation in front of you or on the slide there, what each shift would represent in terms of taxation to the commercial. Same thing with the industrial below that. The average industrial property assessment for the fiscal 2019 year was $1,422,910,000. And you can see the various tax scenarios on the slide per the shifting. If the tax rate is at 1.0, then it would be $28,288,000. 1.17 would create a $33,054 tax share for that industrial property. In the personal property, the average value was $108,315,000, and the corresponding shift would result in the amount taxed. Okay, the impact of the shift change based on the fiscal '29 factor of 1.20. So the residential, we just talked about the average or the median value of a residential property was $263,291,000. If the shift went to 1.0, there would be a $500 -- I mean, excuse me, a $405 increase with a shift of 1.15, it would result in a $100 increase. And with a shift of 1.18, it would, you know, increase at $39. Again, with the commercial, it would, at the 1.0, it would decrease the tax bill $4,549,000. At the 1.18, it would decrease the average commercial bill $448,000. On the industrial, at the 1.0, it would decrease the tax bill $5,651,000. At the 1.18, it would decrease $528 on the average industrial tax bill. So the effect of splitting the rate on commercial industrial assessments. Property A might have a higher tax rate. A lower net operating income would result in a lower, you know, assessment. Property B, lower tax rate, higher net operating income result is a higher assessment. Higher taxes have a negative impact on building values, since it is mostly income-driven. Raising the tax rate lowers the assessment, lowering the actual dollar gain from the split, and discourages commercial and industrial growth. This is fiscal '18 to fiscal '19 tax comparisons of values. Might be kind of hard to see on the slide, so if you have it in front of you. But we had touched base on this a couple slides ago. So it has some of the historical values from fiscal '18 to fiscal '19, and it has the various shifts at 1.20, all the way down to 1. So if you look in terms of the average Auburn residential bill versus the state average, the average tax bill is $5,599 statewide, and the Auburn average tax bill is $4,637, Let's see. Just a note on the bottom. Our commercial industrial rate is the 69th highest in the state in 2016, up from the 67-second in the 2015. That puts us in the top 25% of the state. This is a snapshot of the Auburn home value trends. And as you can see, it has been slightly ticking up. I think we said the average now is somewhere in the low 260s. Number of foreclosure sales is down, and this is kind of reflective of last year, but I think the foreclosures are on the decline as the market, as the real estate market is still appreciating. And this slide here represents the excess levy history on Proposition 2.5 utilized. So essentially, what the top bar graph of fiscal '19 is saying is, we could levy up to 2.5%, but we're levying at 8/10 of 1%. So the eight-year savings to taxpayers, because it hasn't been levied to 2.5%, has been over $23 million. What if we levy to the max? You can see that if we levy to the max, the average residential tax bill is $4,794,000, and it would increase to $5,390,000. And on the commercial, your average tax bill is $27,156,000, and if we levy to the max, it would go to $30,697,000. So it would raise the average residential bill up close to $600,000, and the average commercial bill a little over $3,500. This is the classification tax allocation. You can see the residential factor is .92. There was no discount for the open space. Yep, just kind of a snapshot. Don't get too far into that. Again, just kind of the tax allocation for the fiscal year 2019. And this is kind of a scenario of, you know, what if you shifted rates and things like And the shift range can go from 1.0 to 1.2. That's pretty much it. That's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome, thank you.
I'm going to first ask if the town manager, if the CFO have anything to add to the presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the board and members of the viewing public, those in attendance, thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to just add a few comments in addition to what Seth had presented tonight. I'd like to thank Seth, I know this is his debut, his first presentation in the world of entertainment. And he threw a lot of valuable information out there tonight without his top hat and his cane, so thank you Seth. Lot to digest. But anyway, I would like to remind the board and everyone that town administration continues to work very hard to minimize our level of taxation on all property classes. And I think there's evidence to show that we've done that over the past 10 years, nine years, evident by the fact that we have approximately $5.3 million of excess levy. That indicates that we're not taxing at 2.5. And over that period of time, we saved all taxpayers through all property classes about $28.5 million over that period of time. So we're very proud of that. That's direct savings to everyone, residential, commercial, industrial taxpayers. And we're going to continue to do so. We're nine years running since we haven't taxed at 2.5. Over that period of time, once again, we built up excess levy of approximately $5.3 million. We've built up our free cash, our total certification as of June 30th was 12 point, almost $12.3 million. We managed to do that while holding the level of taxation down. We built up our stabilization to a level of $3.2 million. We established last year for the first time a sped reserve account to meet unforeseen sped expenses that the town would have to appropriate if not otherwise done so at an annual or special town meeting. We've built up our health trust over that period of time to a level of $9.5 million. So that allows us to minimize our rate of increase on our health insurance costs to our employees. And it saves taxpayers money by not appropriating the dollars required to meet the employer's share of those healthcare costs. We've built up our OPEB trust to a level of $4.3 million, when most communities haven't even started that yet. We received bond rating upgrades from Standard and Poor's in Moody's, which we're very proud of, which results in direct savings by paying less in interest costs for the money that we're borrowing. We've built up our contingency and our operating reserve accounts, consistent with our financial policies, about 1/2 of 1% of our net general fund operating revenue. And we continue to appropriate more money in the areas of snow and ice, which really is a good thing because it relies on our reserves to fund any operating deficits that may occur as a result of snow and ice removal. And we continue to earmark general fund revenues in the annual operating budget to offset our capital needs. We've done so consistent with our financial policies. We're adding about 1/10 of 2.5% every year towards our capital program. We're borrowing less money to meet our capital needs, once again resulting in savings to the taxpayers of this community. So I wanted to add that all in because I think town administration is trying to give you, the board, the tools to address your tax classification needs and to listen to the taxpayers in the community in terms of maybe a continued effort to address this split in taxation.
Thank you, Mr. Kasnovich. Anything else on the presentation? I'll now open it up to the board for questions. Are there any questions for Mr. Kasnovich or the assessing team? No questions at this time. So now I'm going to open it up to public comment. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak for up to three minutes, but no longer than three minutes. Who'd like to go first? Mr. Landrigan, if you can come up please and just give your name and, you know, if you're a resident, give your address, if not, your business.
Thank you for allowing us this time to address the board. First of all, thank Seth, great presentation, thank you very much. Ed, that was great information, very insightful numbers, very great job, job well done. My name's Steve Landrigan, Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce, owner and operator Chuck's Steakhouse and Margarita Grill, Route 20, and proud and happily being one of the longest-standing businesses in Auburn over the last 40 years. In those 40 years, we've employed thousands of town residents, mostly high school children with their first jobs, or moms getting out of the house a night or two to help with family expenses while dad can stay home and play Mr. Mom. Also, what we've noticed over the last 10 years or so is that requests for donations have gone completely through the roof. As budgets get cut, the first-place schools, fundraisers, sports groups go are the small business owners. Some of us just can't say no. When you're a national chain or a large corporation, you can play the blame game and blame the corporate office. But when you are the corporate office, it's hard to say no. It's hard to hide, and none of us can say no. I'm only one of many small business/chamber members in this town who are doing exactly the same thing. I feel like as a chamber, it's our responsibility to help businesses prosper and grow, which therefore increases local job opportunity and contributes to the overall economic stability of the community. So with a lower tax rate and more small businesses in town, this is only going to benefit everyone. More jobs, more donations, more support, more commerce, business breeds business. But don't vote to change just because we're here tonight. Look no further than our surrounding towns that we compete with for more small businesses, Oxford, Webster, Milbury, Shrewsbury and their success. Please vote to change because we know in our heart of hearts that this is what's going to be best for the town of Auburn. Thank you again for your time and your support.
Thank you, Mr. Landrigan. Just hold off one second, please.
I want to face you guys. Chairwoman Goodrich, distinguished members of the Board of Selectmen, good evening. My name is Alex Guardiola, and I am the Director of Government Affairs and Public Policy here at the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to take a moment and thank the board for its continued efforts regarding the tax classification. Once again, we must continue our collective work towards a single rate that will serve to expand Auburn's overall tax base and lead to tax equity and relief for all taxpayers, business owners and residents. For almost a decade, this board has made a concerted effort to reduce the split between the business and residential tax rate. Town Manager Julie Jacobson has, for several years now, given an economic update touting increases in economic development in the commercial and industrial sector. This is a direct result of your actions and the actions of past boards to make the community of Auburn more attractive to incoming businesses. As an advocate for the business community of the town of Auburn, I encourage the board to continue to reduce the commercial and industrial property tax rate. We all benefit from a more vibrant community with business, a more vibrant community with business and residents working together, achieving success for all. With the signing of the Grand Bargain over the summer, increasing the minimum wage from $11 to $15 over the next few years, as well as the implementation of the Paid Medical Leave Act, which will force employers to contribute into the State Security Trust Fund, only puts an extra financial strain on our local businesses. Although I understand that this board has no control over those regulations, you do have control over the tax rate base here in Auburn. I strongly encourage you to continue this momentum towards a single rate this evening. While we know that a single rate will not happen overnight, your actions in continuing to move the rate closer show support not only for the business community, but the Auburn community as a whole. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Matty O.Gentili, 33 Silver Street. And I've been a resident now more than half my life, so that's changed since the last time I was here. And I want to thank you guys for doing a great presentation. Good job, first time at bat. I've been doing this tax classification thing for quite a while. I came the first time with a package about yea big, full of pictures of all the empty properties up and down Southbury Street and Route 20. I titled my presentation "The Holes of Auburn." I want to thank you and the prior leaders of our town for changing that. I think a good portion of that change came because you realized that the dual tax rate wasn't working so well. So when that started, that changed the trend. As I drive throughout town, I've loved the town ever since I've been here, I still continue to love it. We're a really good town, I want to be a great town. So that trend is moving in a good direction, I want to continue that. The competition, I sell real estate, so I'm always looking at the neighboring towns and trying to bring people here for their houses. I've also brought my own real estate office, ERA Key Realty Services, Exit Realty Partners and the Board of Realtors. Maybe I didn't have 100%, but I was very influential to ask them and push them to come to our town. The closest two towns, if you look at the chart where it shows where we stack up, they have very similar road access, very similar infrastructures. But Milbury and Oxford, those are our two competitors. And I think one of the things, if we want to attract more businesses as well as residents, if we keep this trend moving, I think we will help not only the businesses and the residents. By bringing in more businesses, the value goes up, their tax dollars will help bring, I think, the entire tax rate down. So I'd like to ask that you guys consider going from 1.2 to 1.1. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gentili.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Mark Sarkisian Jr. I'm here tonight representing Capital Siding Company as well as Auburn Realty and the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. Over the last two years, there has been no change between the two different rental rates. The business tax rate in 2006 was 1.62 to the present rate of 1.20. Originally, back in the day, it was supposed to be a 10-year plan, and we are now in the 13th year. We are fighting to keep the businesses that have gone to our neighboring towns and retain the ones that are here now. Webster will be at a single tax rate by the end of this year. And Fitchburg just drastically reduced their deferential rate by 2/3 and will be at a single tax rate by next year. So besides Worcester, we're one of the only surrounding towns that with this dual rate. What is going to happen and what do we need to do to control this and get more businesses back in town? The minimum tax rate will be going up the beginning of next year, and who's that going to hurt? The small business owners. Also, the town needs to take advantage of the Worcester Red Sox moving right down the street. This could be a huge win for Auburn if we take advantage of it. We have made progress in bringing businesses back to Auburn, but we should be moving on lowering this tax rate. We are the ones who are employing Auburn residences. We are the ones who are always getting asked to make donations, supporting town events and functions, and sometimes that gets overlooked. Look around this room. If I had to ask every business owner here tonight what they have done or donated to this town, we would probably be here for two hours. I have been chairman of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament for a number of years, and we have raised over $300,000 and given it back to the Auburn students in forms of scholarships over the past 23 years. Who is supporting this? The local businesses, not the residences. So now it's time for the town to give back something to the businesses. The residents are receiving a lot of benefits from this town. They have two new schools, a golf course, a beautiful park, and that's just a few of the examples that the business owners are helping paying for, but without their choice or sometimes without their vote. So I'm asking the Board of Selectmen to not only keep the small business tax exemption, but to also lower the commercial rate to 1.10. We thank you for all your hard work and hope you can deliver us some good news this year. Everyone's main objective should be to work all together and do what's best for this town in the long term. We all live and work in this great town, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sarkisian.
Good evening, Boyd. Thank you. My name is Chris Fuller, a resident at 11 West View Street, also a commercial property owner. I have been on the receiving end of many of the benefits that all of the taxes have created since I was born, since I've raised my family here and continue on with the businesses. This was probably by far the easiest and greatest presentation and assembly of numbers that could be referenced very quickly to show some of the data. I think the data does represent that there is an area of opportunity for the burden to continue to shift. It doesn't change for me, I'm going to get two bills, $3 and $2, or $2.50 each. Mine will still be the same, but I believe the benefit for the town wholly resides in continuing that shift aggressively towards a lower number from the 1.2 that we are at now. And I thank you for your engaged and accountable efforts that you all have been giving in this. And it does make it a pleasure to own and operate a home and a business in this town, to be supportive and be supported. And it will continue to be that great with this leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Amar Kapoor. I'm the owner of Aimtech, which is on 201 Washington Street in Auburn, and ATAC Turbine, which is on 1 St. Mark Street. You know, I come here every year and plead the same kind of story, but I think I changed my story a little bit different, maybe I can reach you folks, you know? We are expanding, and the product that we make here is for defense and missiles of the United States. And we, at ATAC Turbine, we repair and overhaul aircraft engine components that goes in our military. So maybe there are a few incentives that they offer us, the surrounding towns. But you know, we like Auburn. We have grown here. And we, I think we have played a role in the lesser foreclosures here and the increase in property value here. Because we have, we now employ about 12% of our workforce, they like to live closer, and they are from Auburn. The others are around here. So the other things, I don't want to repeat what the Chamber of Commerce has already said as what we do for the Auburn. But you got to recognize one thing, we are expanding. And we want to expand in Auburn. But there are surrounding towns that would like to have us come over there too. And then when I look at IPG Photonics in Oxford, I mean, they get a tax incentive, quite a bit of tax incentive, and your tax rates are lower, you know? So I kind of going to echo what I have been saying before, that we should have a single rate or a low rate, like Mark has said, to 1.10. But last year, you know, I thought we were going to get a decrease in the rate, but it was the same, you know? I mean, I was surprised when the, I mean, the decision was yours, but I was a little surprised why you kept it, you didn't go down. So this year, I thought I would bring an olive branch, but I don't think that's necessary, you know? you know? But I urge you to really think hard, because this is a great town, and it's, you know, everybody wants to be in this town and live. And that's one of the reasons that we moved from Worcester to Auburn, and we like to expand in Auburn and not expand in the other town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. DeFalco, and then Mr. Reisner.
Evening, everybody. Thank you for the report. Thank you for the opportunity to express some feelings here. I'm Dr. Fran DeFalco. I'm with the DeFalco Family Chiropractic. I've had an office here now for almost nine years, about eight and a half years. I'm also the president of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. And I know it seems like everyone in the room is a numbers person. I myself am not. To me, that's kind of a little mumbo jumbo, but I understand what's happening here. But I want to do, is express a little bit of what I've felt over the last couple of years. With growing a business comes added expense and adding employees, and I employ Auburn residents, and, you know, I need to try to keep my overhead low, to try to manage that and be able to bring on other people so I can service the community in a better way. Now, I grew up in Auburn, and so I'd like to stay in Auburn. And I found myself looking in other areas like Milbury and Oxford just because rent's cheaper. You know, the tax rates are lower. It's a little easier for people to have properties and be able to rent at a lower rate. And if it wasn't for a chance conversation with somebody who was, who allowed me to negotiate, it allowed me to stay in Auburn. And I'm proud of that, because being part of the community, being from here and being part of the community and being able to work closely with Auburn Youth and Family and the David, Major David Broda Foundation, and to do some things with the local churches and the local softball teams and these kind of things, I wanted to be able to continue to do that. And like I said, if it wasn't for a chance conversation, I may have left town. And what that says to me is, you know, I'm curious how many other people are thinking that just because of the expense of doing business here, and how many businesses have chosen to go all this place just because of that. So I think moving in the right direction, at least showing that there's some faith that the tax rate is coming down, I think will improve some of people's perception that we are doing the right thing. Now, I also believe that because the Wussox are coming into Worcester, and somebody in matter mentioned they're coming down the street, and there's going to be a huge development going on in Keller Square, going on, and I think there's also some development or some reorganization of Jury Square that is in the works that may be considered. If we can show that we have confidence in a board that we're going to a rate, more of a single rate, I think it's going to allow us to have quality businesses coming into town and creating a hell of an environment for the community here. And so I'd like to see that continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reisner?
Hello. My name is Marty Reisner. I'm here on behalf of the Auburn Industrial Development Corporation. We own and lease approximately half a million square feet in the town of Auburn. We've been here for 50 years now, and over those years, we've had hundreds of tenants, and all those tenants are small businesses or big businesses, but they employ dozens of employees. And it's important to us that we keep those businesses in Auburn. And moving towards a single tax rate will definitely help that. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Rafferty?
Good evening, Madam Chairman. I'm not here representing a business. I'm a resident in the town. Hopefully, I'm not the only one here tonight doing that. I speak tonight at this tax classification hearing to advocate for the lowest possible tax rate for the residents of our town. I chose to move to Auburn 25 years ago because its tax rate was lower than many of the towns in the area. This was due in part to the large split between the tax rates between residents and businesses. 25 years ago, Sluckman at that time realized that if we allow business development in town, it would allow us to shift the burden to businesses. This was a form of tax fairness. In exchange for putting up with more crime, traffic, noise, and exhaust, the residents got a discount. Certainly, there is more crime due to retail businesses and more traffic accidents due to traffic, and it increases costs to the town's police and fire departments. In addition, food establishments increased the cost to the Board of Health Department. I understand that we want to attract businesses to expand our tax base, but lowering the tax burden on businesses is not one of them. According to the town's own latest promotional video that you showed here recently, all roads lead to Auburn. We have I-90, 290, Route 12, and 20, all the foot traffic in the world. Location, location, location. In addition, when you raise taxes on businesses, what do they do? They raise prices. I can't do that. I'm stuck with my wages, and other people are stuck with their salaries. Will they go somewhere else? Doubtful. Worcester's tax rate is much higher. Recently, at town meeting, it was disclosed that the town has, through increased tax collections, free cash of about $1.1 million. What did the town recommend? Give back about 0.5% to the taxpayers to reduce our taxes. The rest was kept by the town. In addition, the town continues to hoard over $3 million in the stabilization fund, which, according to a statement by an outside team, outside-town finance auditor that the town hired, said was unusual for towns in this area. Businesses recently received a federal tax windfall from President Trump. What more do they need? Individuals received a tax break also, but unfortunately, it's temporary. I have noticed a trend of higher tax rates and higher evaluations on residents. This has got to stop. No doubt, with more businesses in town, they are increasing their influence on the town. I am here to say we will hold you accountable at the next election. Towards that end, the Auburn Tax Payers Association may be reforming. If you are interested, contact me at 832-9458. Finally, I recommend to the Sluckman a CIP shift of at least 1.35, and would gladly take more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty. Ms. Parent?
Good evening. How are you? I, my name is Virginia Parent. I work at the Worcester Chamber, and I am the affiliate liaison for the Auburn Chamber. And I'm here on behalf to speak for Kathy Kirk. She's unable to be here, but she's been sending some texts and asked that I speak on behalf of her company. Not sure if you're familiar. She is the general manager at Holiday Inn Express. So this is what I've received from her this evening. Essentially, we are facing some real challenges, and we have a need, and we need a lower tax rate. First, we have three new hotels in Worcester, and that's taking away from our competitive edge. Seeing that affects our occupancy rates and our profits. Secondly, we have this new minimum wage law that is going into effect for the next three years, and it's hurting our profits substantially. And she wants to just reiterate that the rising cost with this new minimum wage and the three new hotels in Worcester is going to hurt them even more. So please vote wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Steve Gardner. I operate Sun and Sound. I think we've been there for about 25 years. And what we almost had was a good neighbor with Lowe's, but the town seemed to have issues with it. And at the time, there was a lot of talk about the town not being too business-friendly, and that hurts. And this is one other situation that you could possibly remedy with this. I grew up in Southbridge. I'm very close to Sturbridge, and they had the same attitudes to business. They wanted to stay this little rural tourist town, but Walmart finally got them. So in the basis of that, and I've been talking to different people in the town and the offices, and they do tell me that they're trying to be more business-friendly, and that's important. You know, attitude goes a long way. And this just shows that you're respecting that feature and paying attention to what we need to do to get more businesses. I'm probably in the quietest town of Route, quietest section of Route 12. I'm all by my little self with Bentley's, and I'd love to have a good neighbor. And I thought I was here this evening because somebody had some interest in a property next door, which has been vacant too long, and the grass is growing much too high. So hopefully, we can remedy that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Masterman?
My kind of name is Todd Masterman. My family has had a business here since '81, and we've enjoyed every year, so thank you very much. Town of Auburn's been very good to us, and we've never had an issue whatsoever. Obviously, taxes are a big, big deal to everybody, and I can understand this gentleman's point where, you know, if you're a resident, which I am not of Auburn, but I do pay taxes because I do live in a town in Massachusetts. So I can understand that, why they should deal with the burden of paying more taxes if, when they're really not, they're not going to see anything from that. But, but the way I look at it is, too, is the way businesses, you want a town, businesses are going to open somewhere. The town of Auburn is a great place for businesses to open. Obviously, a lower tax rate is gonna, I mean, you saw it just with politics, taxes, they move people. So the lower the tax rate, I think, will interest more people to move to this town business-wise. And I think if you get more, more businesses in town, they'll take care of the town, so this gentleman's concerns will, you know, hopefully be taken care of with, we're happy to donate whatever, whatever it takes to the town of Auburn. Do whatever, whatever it takes. So I can see both sides, and that's kind of what I do. I wasn't going to talk today because I really hate talking in front of people, and I kind of see both sides of the story, and I don't really want to influence it one way or another. But we are a business in town, and every dollar that we can save, we usually put back to our employees, which not many, for some reason, live in the town of Auburn. I don't understand why, which more did, but they all do spend money in the town of Auburn because we're early at lunch and breaks and stuff. They're always out and about buying coffees and food and whatnot. So thanks again for everything, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, before we move on to board comments, just for the record, we did receive letters from the following businesses or individuals that will be placed in the record of the hearing. From Robert Lemansky, who owns several properties in Auburn, from Chad Clark, from Sheldon Sally Davidson, Carrie Murray from Flaw Source, Dick Taylor from Mastermans, Tim and Marybeth Looney from Builder Systems, Jack Lepore, Chief Operating Officer of Atlas Distributors. And that is it, unless anyone else has anything. I'll now open it up to board comment.
I'll start.
Mr. Berthew?
I think that we've heard a lot of great arguments for the, for the commercial, for the businesses today, and I think that the town is, as Mr. Kavzanovich said, in pretty good shape. We basically have the best of schools. We have the best of fire department, best of police department. We have exceptional recreation facilities and recreation department. We have a great senior center. We have great senior programs. We certainly can continue to work to see how we can help the seniors out, the ones especially trying to stay in their homes. And a lot of that has come at the hands of the businesses in town. And I want to give one example. A shirt like this that has all the sponsors, there's at least 10 names on here, that some are people sitting in this room, and some are businesses in the town of Auburn. We can always, always, always go to the businesses of the town of Auburn and ask. And that shirt came as a result of Mr. Davis, who was the athletic director in Auburn High School, and he wanted to start a senior captains group that would be like a leadership group. And so the Auburn Leadership Group was founded. Mr. Davis asked me to step up and be on the committee, and, you know, the first thing that I said to the students that came to that meeting was, you know, okay, we're going to raise money, and they wanted to raise money to give to several different needy organizations and people in town. My daughter ended up being the benefit of the first benefit when she lost her arm in a boating accident three years ago. But basically, what we went and we told the students was, go see the, go see the businesses of Auburn. Number one, they're going to accept you with a smile, okay? They're not going to kick you out of their building. They're going to take you in. They're going to give you what they can, as much as they can, because they always have. They have with the Little League, they have with, you know, soccer, they have with school functions, We the People, recreation, whether it be the Fourth of July celebration. The businesses of Auburn have always, always, always come through, okay? I thank you guys for that. I thank each and every one of you. You know, we need to bring this tax rate to a single rate. The businesses, over the years, have continued to do that, even though we have Milbury Shops opening up and taking business away from the Auburn Mall, and the Auburn Mall having to, you know, try to find new ways of drawing people in. Market Basket and Price Chopper in towns like Milbury and Oxford, that, you know, people know that it's a bigger store than Shaws or Park and Shop and might have a little bit more variety. But, you know, Park and Shop and Shaws continue to thrive, and they continue to do the best that they can, and they continue to give to the town of Auburn. Basically, you know, a lot of the retail, how many people this year are going to basically do 60% of their Christmas shopping on amazon.com, okay? Our retail shops in Auburn, you know, have to find a way to not only continue to pay their taxes, continue to pay their labor, continue to support the town, but also they have to find a way to advertise and spend money so that they can maybe try to pull a little bit of business away from Amazon, away from Milbury Shops, away from Rentham Outlets. And so, you know, it's a lot bigger challenge as a business now to, to be able to stay in a town like Auburn, to pay a higher rate when, like they're saying, you know, Oxford has a lot of land. If you're an industrial company and they're giving you incentives, you know, I thank you guys for staying in Auburn, even though you could go to the surrounding towns. The hotels in Auburn, we have, what, five, six hotels now in Auburn? You know, we just got this great news of the Worcester Red Sox. You know, these hotels, who I think have been getting by but not flourishing in the town of Auburn, have a real opportunity to draw some, some people back into Auburn. It's going to cost some money to do that. People don't just come because, oh, look, you know, I think the Red Sox are here, so I'll stay in Auburn. We have to spend money to draw them to Auburn. When we draw them to Auburn for the hotels, we're going to draw them to Auburn for our restaurants, we're going to draw them to Auburn for hopefully some retail, and in turn, the businesses, we're going to, we're going to have more businesses open up, paying more taxes, and it's just so important right now for us to have a big flourish, you know, for our businesses to flourish. And I think that where they asked the And I think that where they asked, the chamber members asked to go to a 110 tax rate or CIP shift, we're looking at what, from my numbers, somewhere around 55 cents a day increase to the residents of Auburn. That is not a big deal for us to take a, a good, hard line and say, okay, we've, we've toyed with the businesses for the last 10 years, okay? It's time for us to take a, a big jump, show them that we care. You know, if, if things happen in the next couple of years, and we need to, you know, take smaller steps after that. But I think we're in a good position this year, and I personally think that it, it's well worth, everybody, residents, businesses, and the, the Auburn town as a whole, that we should definitely go to at least the, the 1-1, 1-1-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berthew. I'd like to speak, Mr. La Liberty.
Thank you. I think Mr. Rafferty made some great points. I think it's unfortunate that he was the only resident to come up and speak tonight. Police and Fire, their call volume goes up as a direct result of the commercial industries in town, more so than, than the residents. The police are responding to calls from the mall more than anything else. Traffic is another thing that our residents have to put up with as a result of, of the commercial industries in town. And as he said in our, our video, Auburn is at the crossroads of several major highways. It's a desirable location. I think moving to a rate of 1.10 would be too massive of a jump to do at one time. And it may not seem like that much of a jump, but to us, looking at it, but I, senior citizens in town are on a fixed income, and it would be a, a big jump for them to move it that much. That being said, I do support moving the rate, and would support moving it a few points to 1.18 tonight. Thank you.
Sorry, 1 point?
1-8.
1-8, thank you. Who's next? Mr. Hallstrum.
Again, thank you all for being here tonight. Without the businesses in town, I can't imagine what the tax rate would be for the residents. I know that there are stories out there, and they are scary, of towns and cities that are lacking business in volume, and it's on the residents of those communities that they wind up paying taxes. Years ago, my folks were in business at Drury Square. It was a law, a big different time then, and a lot of the local people did business with the local businesses. And now, it is a time change. And we are now in 2018, and we're on the move, we're on the go. People require services, they expect services. They don't want to pay a lot for their services, but they still need them. And one of the things I find with the residences, yeah, they are on fixed incomes, their insurance rates are going up. However, if the businesses aren't supported, and the businesses start to go away, that tax base goes away. The residents continue to pay more and more taxes, just to maintain the services. And when we can't collect those taxes, the services will deplete. Fire, police, highway, it'll all deteriorate because we're not going to be able to afford it. So, we have to support the businesses now, keep them going. The 1.1, I think, is a little extravagant, because I don't think we're quite ready for that. But I would like to see a move towards the flat rate and go from there. And I do, in, in the back of my mind, I'm still thinking of those people that are trying to make ends meet, the elderly that are on fixed incomes, insurance rates going up, they all have to absorb that, and they have to pay the taxes too, to get the services that they want. So, in order, it comes push to pull, and I will be here to support the businesses tonight, and to hear what the rest of the board has about where we go with the rate.
Mr. Carpenter.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the assessor. How much more can we do in regards to the programs for veterans and seniors?
If you could go to the mic, please. Or come up and join us at the table, if that's easier.
We have maxed out some of the clauses, but we still do have room on some of our income limits for seniors. We can also go down as low as 65 on the age limit for our highest exemption. And I would be more than happy to work with the Board of Selectmen again, and the Finance Committee, and Town Administration to maybe take another look at those, to bring to town meeting in the spring. We've done a lot, but there's still, there are a few things, and there's a few new things that are, that are pending in legislation, that we could also take a look at.
If I could just follow up.
Of course.
What would the income guidelines be? I don't expect you to be spot on, but to, to be eligible for any of this extra help that you say that we could possibly give to residents, seniors?
Rather than, than give you the wrong ones, I, I can get them for you.
Okay.
I can run down, and I can come back in around two minutes with those guidelines for you.
That's entirely up to you, but thank you.
Did you have any other questions before she does that?
I, I have a statement.
Okay. But, before she leaves, I just wanted to make sure, please, go ahead, Mr. Carpenter.
So, I do want to say that, and I've said it before, and last year, I was prepared to go back a percentage point, and I was told, no, it wasn't enough. So, while the tax rate, or the split, has stayed static, every single year, our residents have seen an increase in taxes. Their wages have been flat, their expenses have gone up. So, I understand your point, but I also understand the point of every citizen who has been dealing with one of the worst economic times, when we went from a factor of 162 to a factor of 120. So, I don't think we're, we're doing too terribly, and I think we've gone, come a long way to show our appreciation. So, I would suggest that 1.10, I would never support in one, one go. I would be more in sympathy with 1-8, as suggested. But, I think we have to recognize that the residents, as well as our business community, need to understand each other's situation. The residents don't get a lot of write-offs, they don't get a lot of benefits that businesses do. So, it's harder for them when their incomes don't go up, when we have a large preponderance of senior citizens. And they haven't gotten a raise in Social Security, and when they usually do, then the government bumps up Medicare. So, they get a net gain of zero, if not a minus. So, our seniors are struggling, and our tax rate has gone up in 12 years, over $2,000. That's a lot of money, in a short period of time. Have we gotten a lot of good value for it? Absolutely. I don't think anybody would go back and say, don't build two new schools, don't try and increase our recreational facilities. But it has come at a cost, and the residents have borne that cost as well. And they have less resources today than they did 12 years ago, when incomes were higher. So, I will support a reduction to 1.18, if that's the motion, to try and find some middle ground. But, I do just want to point out that I was prepared to go yet last year, and I was told, no, it wasn't enough. So, you know, I, I feel bad, but on the other hand, I was prepared to do that. So, I was prepared to continue to move, even if it was at a snail's pace, which I, you know, that's all in the eye of the beholder. So, thank you guys for coming, and I wish you continued success.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Did you want to add something else?
If I could just comment on something that Mr. Carpenter said, that, you know, that the residents don't get any benefit or any deductions, or they, they actually, you know, and it is going to change, and we don't know exactly how it's going to change with the new Trump tax code. But, you know, we do, on people's tax returns, they are able to add their real estate taxes and their mortgage interest to get themselves up over the standard deduction, which, in the town of Auburn, I would venture to say, very many people do get to benefit from that. So, I, I don't want the, the idea that, that residents don't get anything back. There is, you know, at, at least a little something that also, that goes along with the, all of the facilities and, and schools and everything that, that come along with it. And I would ask, too, that if, if we, you know, make a, a jump, that there might be a way that, you know, we might be able to sharpen our pencil a little bit more, too, and help, help the residents out, or help the, the tax rate out. But I see where it is right now. I, I still hold firm that, you know, I, I think we, we need to peel the Band-Aid a little bit, and we need to make, make a bigger rate adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I've kind of been writing notes, so if I come off a little disjointed, forgive me.
Just a point, I guess, Mr. Carpenter had some questions about our assessor going down.
Okay, I didn't see she came back. I'll hold my comments till you provide the information to Mr. Carpenter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, for our exemptions for seniors, right now, our 41(c) is the exemption that gives the most relief. That does have an asset limitation for single people of 43, 963 for this year, and an income limit for singles of $27, 713. These amounts are indexed every year, and currently, we're at 67 years of age, we can go down to 65. For the 17(c), which is for widows, widowers, and elderly, that one there has no income limits, it has an asset limitation of $61,375. So, that one there, I do believe we are maxed out on. For the 41(c)s, though, on the married, we have $51,250 for assets, income of $30,750, plus a Social Security deduction of almost $7,000. That one there, we do have room to bring that level up much higher. That is still well below the state maximum. These exemptions, the 41(c), currently, it, the state allows 500, we double that. We do have options where we can increase it, once again, more than the $1,000, which we give when we double. The 17(c), we are now at $201. That is up the maximum for, for the town where we double is at 402. So, we do have some room to not only change our limits, we already index them up with the cost of living, but we can also increase the amount that they're allowed to get for a, for their deductions.
Thank you, Ms. Coswell. Did you have anything else, Mr. Carpenter?
No, thank you.
Mr. Berthew.
Sorry, I just wanted to add, and this might be more, a little bit more of a public service announcement, but there's also, in the state of Massachusetts, for our elderly, what Massachusetts calls the circuit breaker tax. And some residents may not even know about it, but if you own your own home, and you're under a certain income level, and, and there's some people in town that may not even go get their taxes done anymore, and they don't need to necessarily do their federal tax, but they could do their Massachusetts tax. We, we have had people come up and, and get as much as like $800 free, you know, with this circuit breaker tax, that helps, again, seniors that want to stay in their own home. The, the tax preparer would need like the real estate tax bill, the water and sewer bill, and then the assessed value of the home. And based on those things, and based on if their income is low enough, the state doesn't even require you to have earned income, and they will give you a credit. So, that's something else that, again, more of a public service announcement, that hopefully seniors will go speak to a tax advisor and see if they qualify for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I go? Thanks. So, thank you, everyone, for being here. I want to thank Mr. Rafferty, who was the only one who spoke on behalf of the residents. But I do want to thank the business owners for being here as well. You're right, these businesses are, you know, contributing to the community constantly. I mean, we have a business, is it 102 years, Mr. Fuller?
It's 104.
104 years.
He introduced myself, he introduced myself as a resident.
Right, but, but they've been doing business in Auburn, they've been doing business in Auburn for 104 years, and, you know, and contribute to, to everything that they're asked to, so, so thank you for that. So, we talk about the tax rate each year, and each year, I speak up and say, but it's so much more than the tax rate. So, before I say, you know, where I'm willing to move on this, I do want to talk about that. When, when a business looks to cite their business in Auburn, they don't throw a dart and say, yep, Auburn looks good. There's a lot of research that goes into it. They look at public safety, they look at infrastructure, they even look at the regulatory boards to see what types of decisions they've made, how long the process will be before they can be permitted to cite their business. They look at trends in tax spending, they look at medical facilities, housing. It's not just about the taxes. And I just, I, I appreciate you being here every year, and I think I've sensed the comments this year that acknowledge it's, it's more than the taxes. We provide the best public service departments in the area. If you have an emergency in your business, Auburn is there to respond quickly so that your employees are safe and your structures are safe. Just want to look at my notes here. One of the other savings that we've talked about, that Mr. Kasnovich talks about, when we talk about not going to the levee, which, which we know, you can pick up a newspaper around, you know, springtime and see what surrounding communities are doing at town meeting. Not only are they going to the 2 and 1/2, but they're looking for overrides. This is the eighth or ninth consecutive year, ninth consecutive year, we haven't gone to the full 2 and 1/2. So, it may not show in, you know, when you're looking at that number, that, that, that tax rate, but it still shows by not going to that 2 and 1/2. We do offer the small business tax exemption, and we continue to work to offer exemptions for the residents. Having said that, I am going to support a shift this year. And it's, I have to say, it's, it's a work done by our town manager and our CFO. They've provided, provided us with an opportunity this year to move the CIP a couple of points, and we can still, members have thrown out some numbers here. If we move to the 1, 117, the tax rate stays the same at 1844 for the residents. Now, I'm not going to say that taxes aren't going to go up, taxes go up, we've just had reevaluations done. So, homes that were reevaluated, their, their taxes are going up because of that, not just because of the tax rate. So, so the town manager and the CFO have given us an opportunity this year, because of their strong financial policies, what, and I'll acknowledge our, our Finance Committee Chairman here, who follows these numbers closely, who very often acknowledges the strong financial policies that we've adopted, and, and, you know, which is a direct result of the savings that we provide each year. We apply for grants, we, we just, the town manager is doing everything to give the best bang for the buck, not only to the residents, but to the businesses. So, we've had some numbers thrown out here. I will wait to see what motion is made, but I will point out that if we support the 117, it keeps the tax rate at 1844, and this year is an opportunity to move it a few points. And then, we will see what happens next year. So, are there any further comments from board members? Does anyone want? And I'm sorry, Mr. Berthew, I'll just say I can't support the 1, 1-0, that's just too far of a jump. But I can support Mr. La Liberty at the 118, or Mr. Carpenter at the 117. Again, I'll point out that the 117 leaves us at the same tax rate as we had last year. And one other comment, I just want to point out, again, numbers, playing with the numbers. We went into town meeting using 1.14 of the We went into town meeting using 1.14 of the two and a half that we're allowed. What we ended up with our final budget at the fall town meeting, we are this year using 0.8% of our two and a half levy. That is unheard of in most communities, and I thank the town manager and the CFO for the work you do with what you have. Thank you. Mr. Berthew.
I'll make a motion. The lowest I'm hearing that's not cooperating with me is 117, so I'll make a motion that we go with 117.
Second.
So we have, before we make the motion, okay, is there, is there, I'm sorry, we have to close the hearing before we, is there anyone else who wants to make a final comment?
Motion to close the hearing, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Mr. Berthew, if you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reduce the rate to 117.
Second.
We're under discussion. Is there a discussion? Mr. La Liberty.
I had, thank you, through the chair, I had said that I would be, I would prefer 1.18, but if the board is moving in this direction, I would be fine with moving it to 1.17, so I'll just say that I'm on board.
Is there any further discussion? I'll call a roll. Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Please, I know you want to ask us to take the other votes, so if you can come up, please. I wasn't going to forget. So if you can talk about the two, three other votes we need to take, please.
Okay, the first vote is the big one that you just took. The next vote that we need to take is the open space discount. We do not currently classify anything as open space. We don't have land that would fall under this particular guideline, so normally we would vote no on that.
Do you want to continue, or do you want us to see? Does anyone have any questions on the open space discount? Is there a motion regarding the open space discount?
I'll make a motion that we do not adopt the open space discount.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The next would be the residential exemption.
Yes, and you would have the opportunity to make a shift between the residential classes. Because Auburn is primarily all owner occupied, there's very, very little in town that is actually rental property. This exemption really doesn't work well for the town of Auburn. All it's going to do is pit your low-priced homes against your higher-priced homes. There's nobody to shift on. So my, you know, what I would recommend is that you don't vote to adopt that.
Are there any questions on the residential exemption? Is there a motion?
Motion that we do not adopt a residential adoption.
Second.
Any discussion under that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And lastly, we have the small commercial exemption.
We have done that for the past, I think, 10 years, and you voted that at a rate of 10%. That is a shift only between the commercial industrial properties. The presentation Seth talked about exactly what qualifies versus what doesn't, and the effect on the tax rate for the businesses who don't qualify is usually ranges between 9 and 11% at the most.
Is there any, is there any room for expansion on the 10%?
10% is the max that you would be allowed to vote.
Okay, thank you.
Motion we adopt a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there any other action we need to take on this tax classification hearing? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and we are going to move on with the rest of the agenda. We have people who have sat, who chose tax classification night to be here, but we'll be right with you. I think I'm just saying a motion for brief recess.
I'd like to make a motion for a brief recess until...
The room is clear.
The room is cleared.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We're in recess. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Our next item is an auto repair license, Route 12 Automotive LLC at 603 Southbridge Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Do you want to come up and join us here at the table, please? You can come up here. We can hear you better. Thank you. If you could give your name for the record and just tell us what you're here for.
Evening, my name is Andrew Malpass, owner of Route 12 Automotive at 603 Southbridge Street. I'm seeking an auto repair license for that location.
Okay. Do members have questions?
What is going to be the extent of the operation there? It's...
Same thing it's been for 20 years, just general auto repair.
Okay. Is there a, you're expanding your business, so you'll have additional cars on the lot, or are you going to do it by appointment? How is that going to work?
It's all, majority of my work is by appointment. I do service a majority of the cars that, there's a used car lot on that there as well. I service most of the cars on that lot, is a majority of my business as well.
Okay.
The rest of it, most of it is appointment.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? You have been before DCG and you're aware of the conditions they've recommended?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for waiting, you just, I mean, tax classification is once a year in November, so, thank you. Do members have any questions or comments? Is there any public comment? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And we do require you to be here, that's why, even though it'll go quickly, we needed to go through this formal process. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Fair to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting. The next item we have is a change of manager, Applebee's Neighborhood Bar and Grill, Grill and Bar, 680 Southbridge Street, Auburn. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, open a hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is open. Here the applicant, please come up and join us. If you could give your name for the record and tell us what's going on.
My name is Dan Golick. I am the new general manager at the Applebee's in Auburn, so this is just standard with, you know, the change of general manager there.
So this is something that the ABCC requires?
Yep.
Because you are responsible for the liquor license?
Absolutely.
Do members have any questions?
No.
Okay, and I just have a couple. Have you, have you been transferred from another Applebee's? What's your experience?
I've been with the company for over 12 years. This is my first general manager, general manager position, so it's kind of a promote-from-within kind of thing, so this is the first time I've been, you know, going through something like this.
So we, so just, I mean, this is my same speech, but we do take, you know, liquor licenses seriously.
Yep.
You know, we hope that you'll familiarize yourself with our complete liquor license policy and regulations and, you know, just be sure that you're watching...
Yep.
To ensure everyone's tip certified and over-serving, et cetera.
Yep, no, we have, you know, great training programs, you know, in place also, videos, and, you know, we recertify everyone every year in September for, you know, responsible service of alcohol. They go through a class and everything, so.
Great, great. Is there anything else? If there's nothing else, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there a motion regarding the application?
Make a motion to approve the change of manager to Daniel Golick at Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, 680 Southbridge Street, Auburn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thanks and best of luck in your position.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
We have no communications under Board of Selectmen general items. We have a request to appeal the dog nuisance order by the Board of Health. We have a request from Robert Davis Jr., a 14 person ave, who would like to appeal the decision of the Board of Health for a nuisance dog order. As board members are aware, nuisance dog hearings are held at the Board of Health level, and we are the appellant board, so the resident has exercised his right to appeal it and is requesting a hearing. I would recommend that we make a motion to schedule a hearing for November 26, which is our next meeting.
So moved, second.
Any discussion?
At what time, so that we can, I don't know if there's any of the presentations?
I think 7:00 PM works. I'll make that part of the motion.
Make a motion to put it on our next meeting at 7:00 PM.
Still second.
Do we, what was the date again?
November 26 at 7:00 PM.
So, November 26 at 7:00 PM.
Okay, and just under discussion before we vote, are people who were involved with the first hearing at the Board of Health level notified of this hearing? So I understand that they had some residents attend. I'm not sure what our notification would be, but we could re notify people who attended the Board of Health to attend this. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The next item we have is gift acceptance, which I don't think we have any, no proclamations. So the next item is a vote to approve the amendment to House Number 4551, an act authorizing the town of Auburn to relocate Faith Avenue and convey remnant parcels of real property. Ms. Jacobson, if you could just give the board a summary as to what has happened with this and what process it has taken.
Certainly, so to refresh the board's memory, this was an article that was on the May town meeting, and after that it went to both Representative Frost and Senator Moore, who sponsored the legislation for us. Over the summer, the, it was on the House side, and House counsel came back with a recommended amendment for the Board of Selectmen to adopt because it was considered a significant amendment. It was adding language referencing a deed layout and a certain chapter. So the board did take that vote probably about four weeks ago. After that, the bill went over to the Senate side. Senate counsel looked at it and came back to us on Friday morning, late Thursday, it was after the agenda was posted, which is why we had to repost it, because we just found out. And they came back to us about 4:30, 5 o'clock on Thursday, and said that Senate counsel would like the board to take an additional vote, really to just clarify it. And as you can see in here, the amendment would be to insert after the word contrary in line to the following words, but subject to paragraphs A, B, and G of Section 16 of Chapter 30b of General Laws. The intent is they just want to get it in there, that the board has to follow and the town has to follow all Chapter 30b procurement laws when transferring this property to another owner, which we would anyway, but they want to secure it by having language in the bill. So we're asking you to vote to include this language. If the board does vote to include this language, Senator Moore will then make this amendment as a motion on the floor of the Senate. And then from that point, it should move forward. That should be the last legal review of it, and it should move forward.
Mr. Holstrom.
Through the chair, is that going to, it won't have any effect of what's already been done up there, then? It's not going to increase land, it's not going to increase any of the design of the land, it's not going to increase or change, revise anything that we've done? This is just a paperwork?
Well, this actually, through the chair, this is, and better words for it, I'm probably not saying it right, but it's a land swap. So we're taking land that we own and giving it to them, and then they would be taking land that they own and giving it to us to redesign the layout of Faith Ave. At the end, when this is all done, the town's public road will be better than the town's public road now. It will be better for DPW purposes, it will be better for fire and police purposes as well. So this was a benefit to the town. It also benefits the business because then they're able to continue with their expansion plans.
Okay.
So it doesn't change anything that has been brought to Planning Board already as far as any approvals. Any work that's going on there now is being done in concert with previous approvals that they already...
This is just procedural.
This is legislative that is needed to make that transfer.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? So we have a motion before us that would meet the legal requirements. Does someone want to make that motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve an amendment to House Number 4551, an act authorizing the town of Auburn to relocate Faith Avenue and convey remnant parcels of real property by inserting after the word contrary in line two the following words, but subject to paragraphs A, B, and G of Section 16 of Chapter 30b of the General Laws.
Thank you, Mr. Holstrom. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to town manager items, we have a 2019 Massachusetts Downtown Initiative grant application for a wayfinding and branding program for Drury Square. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, we found out about this grant after the last board meeting, and the deadline for submission was November 7. So we did, I believe it was November 9, and we submitted it on November 7. So we're asking you to vote to accept and expend the funds, should we get them. The application is in your package, and just to remind the board, this is the Downtown Initiative Grant that, it was called the MDI, Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Grant, that we had applied for and received a few years ago to do the, to complete the Drury Square Vision Plan. So that was a $10,000 grant that we got to get a consultant to do the vision plan. What we're proposing now is another $10,000 grant to allow us to start implementing some of the recommendations in the Drury Square Plan with specific regard to wayfinding and branding. So making sure that we have appropriate signage in Drury Square that directs pedestrians, vehicular traffic, and visitors to the community who may not know where to go as to what areas are in, what businesses are in that area, also for bicyclists. It just would enhance the wayfinding ability of Drury Square and the branding of it, hopefully as a downtown. So this would be also a $10,000 grant if we receive it. That would fund a state-supported consultant to come in and help the town design what could be a very nice wayfinding and branding program.
Mr. Berthew.
I'll make a motion that we accept, that we accept and expend the funds for the grant if we receive it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it is unanimous. And we also have a vote to accept and expand grant funds for the St. Vincent Healthcare Fund for 11, I'm sorry, for $1,000 for Rides for Health. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, this is a grant that we have been fortunate to apply for each year through the senior center. I believe the last couple of years, the grant amount was around, 1,200 was the first amount, and then the last couple of years it had been 1,000. So we've been awarded $1,000 again, and it helps offset our transportation costs for our bus.
I'll make a motion, we accept the grant and authorize the expenditure of the funds.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Anything else, Ms. Jacobson?
It's not on here, just a, just a comment. Want to thank the board. Couple months ago, you had supported a grant application for us for Leesville Pond Dam, and we had also put that item on the fall town meeting warrant for funding to do the work that needs to be done there. And we did find out the day after town meeting that we were approved for $188,000 for that grant. So we're very excited about that, waiting to get the formal paperwork done and signed. But I just wanted to thank the board and let you know that that's a really exciting thing. We did go for the funds at town meeting, it had to be done, and we were hoping to offset some of it, and now everything's in place to move forward on it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Moving on to tabled items, we have Mr. La Liberty, a member item, discussion on a town-sponsored informative mailings for ballot questions in your packet. You have a letter from the town manager with some additional information. Who wants to speak to this?
Through the chair, I'm happy to speak to it. This was in your packet at the October 22 meeting. We've put it in the packet again because we didn't have a full complement of the board, and we wanted to make sure everybody was here. I mentioned it previously because Mr. La Liberty had pointed out correctly that there was a resident in the audience who had spent the night waiting for this item, so at the end, we just kind of summarized it. So forgive me for those who are here for summarizing it again, but I think it's important to know. So the question was whether a town board could provide voters with written information about a question that appears on a local ballot so that voters can make a better informed decision. And the only way to do that under the law is for the Board of Selectmen to accept... And the only way to do that under the law is for the Board of Selectmen to accept... They would have to adopt Chapter 53, Section 18b. So this opportunity came into effect with Chapter 188 of the Acts of 2010, which provided for the local acceptance law to allow municipalities to send mailings to voters expressing their opinions. So the Board, if they want to send mailings to voters, would have to adopt Chapter 53, Section 18b. And the governing body under this is the Board of Selectmen. So it would be a board vote. The Board has not done that previously, so this doesn't exist. And we met with Town Counsel Robert Henigan on this issue, and he did confirm to us that if the Board were to accept this, moving forward, every time there was a question on a local ballot, whether it was a binding question or a non-binding question, the town would be required to print information and mail it on each side of the issue, on what a yes vote would mean or what a no vote would mean, and any additional text. And if there is a process under the law for the Board would have to follow, and it's in your, I think, fourth paragraph here, then you'd have to seek written arguments from proponents and opponents to the question, and the process has to be run through your Town Counsel. And then if you don't have anyone come forward who wants to take either the pro side or the opposition side, then Town Counsel would be required to provide both, an argument for and an argument against, and that would have to be mailed out. So the town couldn't selectively decide which ballot questions they wanted to write about. It's all of them or none. I did make a note in here that the town of Shrewsbury, which had... Was an article in the paper. Prior to 2010, when this law came out that allowed municipalities to adopt this, the town of Shrewsbury didn't have that option to them, and they had a question on the ballot. I think it might have been to do with an override for the schools, and they wanted to educate their public. So they actually filed special legislation, a home petition, through the legislature to be allowed to go forward. And so they did adopt that through the legislature, but they didn't adopt it through this chapter. So there are little slight nuances between the two, but basically what Shrewsbury has is almost similar, very similar to what state law is. So I just want to point out that, again, it would be... There is a whole series in here. I did include the actual Chapter 53, Section 18b, so you could see what it required. The notice to the proponents, it can't be more than 150 words. It has to go to the clerk. There's an entire process that you have to follow. So I just want to make sure that you can see that on the attachment hearing.
Ms. LaLiberty, this is your item. Did you want to speak to this?
So I think with the election two years ago now, we had a ballot question that caused a lot of confusion. I know Mr. Bertheum and I have talked about it. Residents coming up to us afterwards confused about how they voted, meaning to vote one way and voting the other way on both sides of the issue. And I think in the most recent state election, there was a lot of confusion surrounding Question 1, where people weren't sure really what the question was asking. So I think something like this would be beneficial to the town. I think that we should adopt it, and if possible, I'd like to schedule us a vote at our next meeting to adopt Chapter 53, Section 18b. That would be my thoughts going forward. I don't know what other Board members are thinking right now, but I think that this would be an overall benefit to residents who are looking for summaries on what the law is that they're voting on.
Mr. Holstrom.
I think it's very, very important, well, through the Chair, I think it's very, very important that the voters know exactly what it is they're voting on. However, the thing that scares me is the fact that something would come forward, they'd have to draft something, we'd have to go through council, we'd have to, you know, hear both sides of the argument, and it'd be an ongoing thing. And I understand the two things that you were talking about. One of them was the marijuana law, and that was confusing for all of us. And I'm sure that there was a lot of information that was passed around, some right, some wrong. I don't know what was passed out there. But... And then, again, it's just an ongoing thing, and I think that for those couple of things, we have social media out there right now, and I don't think that it's something we want to get involved with. I think it'll be a very costly, time-consuming thing. It'd be basically another board would have to... Or another employee have to put something together just to focus on that one thing. And I think it'd be a little bit above and beyond what the town should be doing. If the information is needed, they'd let the people do the study and research on their own. And like I say, social media, there's a lot of information out there, and with the Internet, there's ways of getting that information. So I don't think it's in our best interest to pass it along because it could be interpreted that the town is saying, well, we should go this way. Well, I'm having a hard time with that, so I think we would just stay away from all that and let the people who are voting and want to decide on an issue, let them do their own research and get their own information. Thank you.
Mr. Bertheum, then, Mr. LaLiberty.
I agree with Mr. Holstrom, although I think it's so important that we understand what the questions are, and it would be nice to hear both sides and the impact. But I just don't feel that the town would... You know, if we had to do every question and we needed to provide both sides, and, you know, 90% of them are pretty much cut and dry. And so for the few that are confusing, and one of the questions that Mr. Liberty referred to in this past election was question number one, and I'm still not sure of what the right vote was. And I questioned nurses, and I questioned doctors, and I read as much as I could on it. And still, I think that if the town spent money to come up here and give me both sides, I still would have walked out of that meeting not knowing exactly what was the definite right way to vote. So if we could have done it, you know, on occasion, you know, knowing that there was some sort of confusion like the marijuana law, I think that there was definitely... He and I spoke, and, you know, we had... I know I had so many people come to me and go like, I think I voted the wrong way. You know, like, I went in there wanting a certain outcome, and I voted the wrong way. If we could have, in that particular instance, just done a one-time thing, I'd be all for it, but not for every question. I just want to be able to favor that.
Go ahead, Ms. LaLiberty.
I think it's important to point out that, at least under my understanding, and the Town Manager can correct me if I'm wrong, that this would only apply to our local ballot initiatives and our questions. So I was using Question 1 as an example of something that confused voters, not as something that we would actually send out. So we're not talking about every question on every election. I think it's fairly rare that we have questions on the ballot. Marijuana was an example, and we're going to have one in May in this election. So they do happen, but I don't think it's that common of an occurrence that it would be every year we're worrying about this. The other thing is Mr. Holstrom brought up social media. There is a lot of false information that goes on on social media, so people looking to do research on that, that may not be the best way of getting it. And that's true at all levels. Again, it's not a bias. I think that was a concern that many members, including myself, had when we first started looking into this, is we wouldn't want to appear that the town or the Board is biased in either way on a question. Again, from looking at what this law is, it seems that you've got proponents and opponents providing their own small blurb on a summary of it. It's really more of an informational packet than an argument. And if they don't happen to come around to it, Town Counsel writes it. That's an impartial person writing it. That's... I don't think there's going to be a bias there. And I also believe Town Counsel would be on retainer. I can't see this taking up a large amount of time. I do see a cost with maybe the mailing, but again, for not doing this every year, I can't see the cost adding up that much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Did you have your hand up, Ms. Carpenter?
I did.
Yes, thank you.
So I did have a couple of questions for you, Ms. Madam Chair, to the Town Manager. Who would be responsible for selecting? It says Town Counsel will select the best person. How is it that the Town Counsel would come to know this? Would there be a process for proponents and opponents to petition either your office or directly his office to say, I would like to be selected? And how long do we anticipate that that type of a process would? Would... How much time that would consume, and who would be the person doing it? Who would be doing the mailings? Would that be the Town Clerk's office? Would it be outside service?
Through the Chair. So as far as the first part of your question, Mr. Carpenter, it... The law puts most of the onus of the responsibility on Town Counsel. So when I did talk to Town Counsel, he seemed to feel that it was actually going to be rather time-consuming, in that Town Counsel has specific timelines that they have to work with. So within... Not later than one day after the Board takes a vote to put a question on the ballot, the Board of Selectmen then has to provide notification to the Town Counsel. So you have one day to notify Town Counsel. Town Counsel then only has seven days to seek written arguments for the principal proponents and opponents of the question. So that is all solicited by Town Counsel. So basically, Town Counsel has to advertise at the... It will be our cost. He would have to advertise for that and then solicit who would be best, and that would be his determination to make. Under the law, Town Counsel makes that determination. If only one side submitted information, he would be required to do the other. The odd part of this law is if neither side had a proponent who came forward, he would be required to do both, make an argument for and against something. It was be mailed... It's supposed to be mailed to every household where someone who... Whose name appears on the current voting list resides. So the cost would be, you know, there would be a significant cost in mailing. I believe it has to be done through the Town Clerk's office, but that doesn't mean the Town Clerk couldn't outsource it, is my understanding. I think they could, but the cost still would be incurred upon the town. And then, as you can see, they... There's a whole process that Town Counsel has to follow. So it really does fall upon your Town Counsel to take on the bulk of the work here. Town Counsel also mentioned that in lieu of this grassroots efforts in a community, you could still have proponents and opponents of questions sending out information on their own. It doesn't mean that town... The town itself as an administration through Town Counsel needs to do it, but that other groups could be out in the community. There could be a pro Question 1 group. I know that's a state question, and you're right, Mr. LaLiberty. This is for local questions only. This is your local ballot question. So there can still be local grassroots groups or formalized groups that put together information and do mailings, but for the town to do it, you have to follow this process.
If I can just...
Yes, you may, Mr. Carpenter.
We're asking to follow a very formal process. Now, I know in the past, and don't ask me when, but I do remember Council writing something for ballot questions. And we didn't have this section then, so why would we need to adopt it now?
That's a great question. So we did, as far back as we were able to determine, Town Counsel and either the prior Town Counsel and the Town Clerk's office has always put, as in most communities in Massachusetts do, put a yes vote means this and a no vote means this. The Elections Commission confirmed for us twice in the last two weeks that that is not allowed. It was likely, and I don't want to say it was for sure because it might have been before 2010, but it might have been allowed previously. But now with this law in place, it's not allowed. So communities are still doing it because they're probably not aware that they're not supposed to do it, although when Town Counsel did it two years ago, it was approved. The Elections Commission had seen it. So I don't know if the opinion had changed at any point, but moving forward, we would not be putting a yes question means this or a no question means this.
Yes, you may.
Is there a route outside of doing a mailing that we can provide information?
The town cannot. If the town wants to provide any information on a local ballot question to the voters, it has to follow this process and show both sides. But that doesn't mean that another committee couldn't be out there advocating for what they want. I do want to note that in the law, it says in Section E, in determining the principal proponents and opponents of a ballot question, the Town Counsel shall contact each ballot question committee, if any exists. That's defined in Section 1 of Chapter 55. So if there is a formalized committee that exists, then Town Counsel is to contact them, and that's how he solicits comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Holstrom.
We have on the agenda tonight tabled items, Mr. LaLiberty's member item, discussion on a town-sponsored informative mailing for ballot questions. Through the open meeting law, is there anything holding us from taking a vote on that tonight, or should we have our vote for next week, as Mr. LaLiberty was mentioning?
So it would be my belief, and I will confirm this, that it should have read "discussion and potential vote on a town-sponsored informative." So if we wanted to take a vote, I would believe that we would have to hold it till the next meeting.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
We can still... I mean, we've posted it. We've posted that we've had discussion, so you don't need the motion to discuss it. And that's what Mr. LaLiberty has asked. But if we... Do you want to add anything to that? Would you... Would that be your understanding?
That would be my understanding. I just think it's always better to be safer.
Absolutely. I have no problem with that.
It's probably not specific enough to take the vote. Generally, we've always put on there discussion and potential vote, but because it was tabled, we didn't know. Because this goes back to September before we even had all this information available.
No, I wouldn't want to rush it either.
And I want to thank the Town Manager for putting this together, and I'll just make a couple of comments tonight. We will vote on it the next time. But, you know, it... We say, you know, it doesn't happen frequently, and it doesn't. But, you know, I'm just looking at some potential questions that we could have in the future, be it, you know, the single-use plastic bag ban. We've had the swimming pool study that potentially could go to the voters. There's been talk about a public safety building potentially could go to the voters. People talk about charter amendments. We talk about additional funding for the schools. So we do have the potential to have several questions in the near future. My concern is that if we adopt this and the town, you know, writes the summary for these, we will... And I mean, history shows it. We will always be accused of a bias. If... If... I'm going to just... A general question. The vote no people provide their summary, but the vote yes people don't provide their summary. So Town Counsel writes that summary for vote yes. People are not going to be happy. I think, you know, I was involved in some when it was building the schools. I think you'll always get a group, you know, a small political group that will get together, get their best information out there if they support a question. I do, you know, and I wasn't aware of the full process, but I just think we're reading this, we're going down a slippery slope if we're going to now ask, because it doesn't even have to be our questions. It could be, you know, it could be another department. It could be a citizen's petition. It could be anything. So I appreciate your efforts on the plastic bag ban, and I fully expect that you will be out there getting lots of great information out there, but I just... I'm not ready to support this right now. Yes, please go ahead.
This isn't just... I mean, obviously, this would affect every question moving forward, and I don't think that's... Should be seen as a reason not to accept this. Obviously, I was a proponent of the plastic bag ban. That'll be on the ballot in May, and I think this would be great to inform voters on that so they know what they're voting on. But I think, as you mentioned, a town charter amendment or any other question that came before the residents, whether it be building a new high school or whatever, something like this where it would be non-biased. I mean, you've mentioned the Chair, and Mr. Holstrom have mentioned other organizations that'll form, local grassroots groups. The information they'll spread will inherently be biased toward their side one way or another, and it won't reach every resident. People that go to social media, it's going to be biased, and it won't reach everyone. I think this is a way to reach registered voters in Auburn, give them a non-biased answer. And residents may complain, or groups may complain that they didn't have a fair chance, but they did have a fair chance if they've got the seven days. Or granted, that's not... Or granted, that's not too much time, and I wish that would be, there would be more time for them to submit something, but that's on the legislature. But they would have time to, to submit something for their side to, as a proponent of it. And I think at the last couple of meetings, we've talked about voting turnout, or voter turnout, and how it's been low, and this would be a way to not only remind everyone that, or tell them about the question and which way they should vote, or what their vote will mean on the question, but also to remind them that there's an election. We've had very low turnout in local elections, and granted, this wouldn't be every one, but when there's a question, it would be a reminder. So I think it would be an overall benefit, but that's just what I have.
So we'll be sure to have that on the next agenda, and we can continue this discussion. Did you want to add something else, Mr. Carpenter?
Can I just ask a further question or perhaps additional information through the chair? Chair of the town manager, would it be possible to have town council give us some sort of estimate of the amount of time it would take him or his office to comply with this section? I don't know if anybody else is.
Through the chair, I can certainly ask him if he can do that. I will say that there are a lot of variables in this, because it depends if there are groups out there that have already been identified that he reaches out to and they're willing to do this, his time is less. If there's only a group on one side of an issue, his time is more. If there are no groups and he's writing it all.
Right. So, I mean, I can see him giving us several scenarios.
Right. We can also, because I apologize, Ed, and I would just, there's no way to do it tonight for you, but we were trying to think of what the costs were going to be. But let's say we had to make 8,500 mailings. There's the cost of the stamps. This is a large packet that goes out. So we're talking probably somewhere between 50 cents and a dollar, depending on the weight. I don't know, I don't know how many pages it would be, but there is a required, you can't go more than 150 words, so a couple pages. You have to put the entire text of the ballot question, so if the ballot question was long, that also has to go in. And then that didn't count the labor that we have to pay through the group that does all of our, our mailings and billings that we, they do our tax bills. And then that didn't include town council or the local labor here either. So we can try to get some cost for you so you can have a better idea of what it is. There's just going to be a lot of variables, and it's not going to be that specific, but we'll see what we can get.
And if I can just follow up with one further question. Do we know how many towns have adopted this, or communities have adopted this in the Commonwealth?
I don't know how many. I tried to find, I can continue to look. I'm sure we can get it through the Election Commission. I couldn't find any site online that actually identified it. And I should clarify, and I mentioned it before, but to answer your question, Mr. Carpenter, about what else, how else could a town do this? The only way is adopting this or the special legislation, which isn't needed anymore because you have this. But it was still an option back in 2007 when Shrewsbury did that.
I'm just thinking if we could go electronic mail. I know the town clerk has several people's emails and things of that nature. If we could do something to reduce the cost using technology, which this clearly doesn't contemplate, so.
Right.
Maybe something to consider for our delegation to ask in future, to see if we can't utilize those avenues, whether it be, you know, our social media pages, so at least they know that it's coming from an acceptable and legitimate source, let's hope. And, you know, maybe bring down the cost and get more eyeballs on it, but for another time. But thank you.
So we will have this information for, on the next agenda. Next tabled item we have is a revision to the recognition policy. I'm not even sure who this was at this point. Mr. Holstrom and Mr. Botham. Do you want to address it?
Okay. Yeah, this is something the subcommittee had put together, and it was in, you know, to follow up the, the last type of a recognition event that we had for town employees, retirees and what have you. And this, we put together and kind of made it a little bit more generic, made it a little bit easier to, you know, just acknowledge that we are having some type of a recognition and that just to send out a, instead of an individual invitation to certain people where you may lose people and you may have left them out, this would be more of a notification that we are going to do this, we would love to hear from you. And so I didn't know if there was any questions, comments on what we have in front of us, so I'll leave it up to the board and make some comments.
Mr. Carpenter.
If I could, just, the National Public Recognition Week is in May.
May.
If, if the board's putting it on, it would be very hard. I would recommend maybe we put it in September to avoid the conflict with the election. And the National Public Recognition Week really is more geared towards the federal government, and it's really geared towards staff than it is for a board, for a community event. It's usually workplace supervisors and managers putting, putting them on. So if we could do it, I would say maybe in September, then, I don't know if that's great or not, certainly it's up to other people. And I know I'm certainly not averse to having the town employees. I thought we were just going to keep it to boards and commissions members, because they don't really have an event that's just theirs to recognize them. And I know town administration has several events that recognize both, but this would be something that maybe this board could do just for the volunteers in the community, without taking anything away from anybody who contributes to the overall organization. But it would just be nice for the volunteers, past and present, to get together and, and be thanked for the fact that they have given so much back to the community. So those would be my only recommendations. And thank the committee for the work that it did.
So I'll, I'll just comment as well. You know, I think I agree with the, this, holding this. The Board of Selectmen will recognize, I would, I wouldn't set a specific week or even a date. I think somebody said September. I too want to echo the concern. It was my understanding that we're going to recognize boarding commission members and volunteers. I just, you know, that, that the whole issue with the charter, I would agree with Mr. Carpenter on removing town employees. Employees who have, have retired, I would, I would also agree. I mean, you know, sometimes we're included in a retirement recognition, which, you know, we've, we've showed an interest that as board members, we'd like to at least be made aware so we can acknowledge their, their retirements, but that's still, you know, department heads, employees concern me. I think it should be, the original intent was board and, boards and commissions and volunteers.
Okay.
I would make that July, if you're going to have it in September, because that's when people's terms end, June 30.
Oh, so, yes, Mr.?
Oh, I was, just for clarification, so we'll strike everywhere on the policy here that says town employees. Is that what we're proposing? And, and then in the first paragraph, it would end with annually during the month of September? Is that what we're proposing? Okay. And then the, so the third paragraph, employees who have retired, so I'd get rid of that, strike that. So we'll just start with board and commission members and volunteers.
And while we're on that paragraph, not to interrupt, just while we, I, when I looked at the first paragraph, it was September. In that paragraph, it says who have ended their service prior to January, because terms end the last, the last day in June, we might consider changing that word, January to July. So who, who have finished, who have ended their service prior to July shall be announced.
Yep.
Because that would be in line with the appointments. But thank you for your work on this. I know we've gone back and forth, but, you know, I'd rather have something done right than rushed. Mr. Holstrom.
Okay, through the chair. I guess then in the fourth paragraph here, we'll get rid of department heads.
Correct.
So it's going to be heads of boards and commissions and volunteers.
Yep.
So department heads will remove that also.
If I could, I would suggest that maybe we, we would invite them to, as we, we invite the manager and others, and they do interact, so, I mean, it would be entirely up to the option of the department head if they attended. But I think it would be nice to.
I think that could.
Have staff that relate to the boards. You know, the planner obviously isn't a department head, but the planning board, zoning board, building inspector, all these people, they might like the opportunity to meet socially rather than.
So just to play devil's advocate on that, because we've gone back and forth with this, this policy, I think it's a great idea to invite anyone, but I think that could be done when we're in the planning process, that we make a motion to invite department heads or whatever. Once we adopt a policy, then we have to go back and change the policy. But keeping in mind of what you just said, I think it's a great idea to invite, you know, if, if the chairman of the planning board is no longer serving and they've interacted, like you said, with the planner, you know, of course, it would be lovely to include them as well. But once you include it in the policy, then we've got to go back and amend our policy.
Okay. I hadn't thought of it that way. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. So is there anything else on this policy? We'll have a final draft at the next meeting, and we can finally vote on it. Thank you. And so the next item is the proclamation policy. Who's going to speak to this?
Yeah, okay. Again, the proclamations, we were requesting proclamations for all kinds of things, and it was just getting to a point that if, well, basically if somebody put a new coat of paint on their house, we would get a proclamation for them. We would try to resolve that and try to identify, you know, the real need for where proclamation should be sent out. And what we have here in front of us is a little bit more of a identifiable list that we could go with proclamations, letters of appreciation or congratulations, and duties of the Board of Selectmen. So you've all had a chance to look at it, read it, and be looking for comments, concerns, questions.
I like that.
I think it's very.
No, actually, I, I do have a comment, just because we had one recently. Just under proclamations, you know, having it at least one month prior to the event, sometimes it's difficult, and I'll use the most recent example of the proclamation that we just did for Just a P. Tuttle.
Mm-hmm.
I don't believe that we had that a full month in advance, but we did have time to receive the email and the board members voted on it, and there was a lovely ceremony on Veterans Day. So, so I think if we ask, I'm not even sure that we, how we include, because of our meeting schedule, we could get, I don't want to say two weeks, because it could come in two weeks, but not in time for meeting. We've got to have it in time for an agenda, but I think I'm not.
If, I think, sorry, through the chair, I think if we go with a two-month, that's at least a two-month.
No, two weeks, two weeks, not two months. Because we have one month here. What I'm saying is it shall be made in writing at least one month. I think that might, you know, I mean, we could, we can always overrule our own policy, but I'm not sure that we should have a number in there. I think we should just say, request for proclamation shall be made in writing to the selectmen's office, because we have to vote on it anyway. So if they don't get it in time, then we would tell whoever submits it, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen isn't meeting until, you know, for two weeks, and there isn't time. But we can send something after the event.
So you would suggest that we take at least one month out?
Yes.
But made right at the selectmen's office prior to the event. We should leave that in there then.
Oh, of course, yeah.
All right. Okay?
Mr. Carpenter.
Well, I was just going to suggest that member items are required to be in by noon on Wednesday before the scheduled meeting. Why don't we just adopt the same thing? That way, we give them a specific time. So, I mean, the earlier we get it, the better, but that way, I know the chair usually meets on Thursday to set the agenda, so that way, at least that would give staff time to receive it and present it to the chair prior to setting the agenda.
I'm just thinking, if we, the time, I mean, the request, I suppose, has to be in, but then we have to approve it and get everyone's signature, so.
Right.
I still.
But they're going to request it before the meeting.
It has to be written.
So drop dead deadline is noon Wednesday before our meeting, so that the next day, when you go in to meet, or however you meet, maybe you meet on Wednesdays sometimes, you'll at least have it in hand. I mean, I would rather they submit it ahead of time, but at least if we give them a drop dead deadline, which is in keeping with what board members have to follow, it at least gives them a date or a time to shoot for. That after this, there'll be no consideration.
If, if I could, so if we, if we said, selectmen's request for proclamation shall be made in writing to the selectmen's office by the Wednesday prior to any selectmen's meeting date, and should be, and should summarize. So by the Wednesday prior to any selectmen's meeting date.
It would have to be during business hours at least, because what if I send it at 5:05 on Wednesday and nobody's here, because they've gone home for the day? And now technically, you've met the rule. I just figured if it was noon, they would at least know that.
That, that's okay. I'm sorry, I can put noon, by noon on the Wednesday prior to any selectmen's meeting date.
That's the deadline. Obviously, they can submit it whenever they like, but prior to that. Should we, should we match that with the letters of appreciation or congratulations or support as well? Should we put a, because we don't have a time. We just do that for proclamations, I'm just throwing it out there. Should we not be consistent and say?
The town manager would like to be heard on this.
If I can just make a suggestion, and whether you have to put it in writing or not, but in the section here where you're saying that the, the first paragraph, it should summarize what the proclamation is for. Oftentimes Sharon prepares the proclamation, so if we get it in on Wednesday and she has to have it done and written and in your packets by Friday, the problem that we run into is that people don't provide the proper information that we need to actually write the proclamation. So I think we need to be a little stronger in the language, that people shall provide detailed information on what the proclamation, what or who the proclamation's for, because it could take four or five phone calls, back and forth emails with the party who's requesting it to say, what's the date, what's it for, how many years of service did they have, what are we recognizing, what do you want us to say? And it really only gives us one day to write it. So if we could just add that it should summarize in detail what and or who the proclamation is, is for, what the event is that's being recognized, because you want it to be descriptive and have it say something nice about either the event or the person, but oftentimes, we don't have that information.
Mr. Botham?
I just, I don't want to say summarize in detail. I, I would say, and should detail exactly what the proclamation is for. If, if everyone's okay with that.
Do you want to put some examples like day, date, event, something?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Mr. Carpenter.
I was just saying, would you like to put examples such as day, date, event, you Just so that they're getting, you know, priming it so that they understand what it is we're looking for.
Accomplishments. It's those types of things that you want to write about, but sometimes we don't have. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be in there, but at least on, on the side, we could put something together that we could provide.
Yeah, so I was on the, I was thinking on the. Yeah, so I was on the, I was thinking on the lines of what you just said, you know, this is, this is, this policy is really to determine who gets, you know, who gets what, whether it's a proclamation, a letter of appreciation, and the duties of the Board of Selectmen, but we could also just have guidelines for the office to have on requesting a proclamation, and that would include the requirements of date, time, summary, timeframe. I don't think we need to have all of this in here.
Mr. Holstrom.
I think one of the things we're doing right now is we're putting the cat before the horse. What we have to do is get the request in with the information, the detailed information to present to us, to determine whether we're gonna send the proclamation or not. So I think, you know, we should put some kind of a, we'll draft something to put together here so that we get the request, and then it'll go on our agenda for, you know, and then we will draft it after that, instead of drafting something and bringing it to us, the proclamation will be for, with the detailed information, so that we'll have that, we can decide whether or not it's a proclamation or not, or whether it's, or what it could be.
And that's what, that's what I'm, I'm saying, you know, if, so, so by adopting this policy of just what, who gets a proclamation, who gets a letter of appreciation or congratulations, you know, I think that gives a good guideline so that when someone contacts the office and says, you know, "I'd like to request recognition for my Eagle Scout," you know, they look at the policy and say, okay, we're happy to send a congratulatory letter or a proclamation, whatever our policy says.
If it's okay, I'll just, I'll kind of revamp this and we can revisit it. It's 9:30 at night, quarter to 10:00.
Okay, all right.
I'm pretty much done trying to think of how I'm
I agree with you, I think we're kind of spinning our wheels here. So I'm gonna move on to item D, which is a discussion and vote on the proposed board goal to perform a comprehensive review. This was my item, and I know that we had talked about adopting a goal, not adopting a goal, so similar to, you know, when Mr. La Liberty requested to, to pursue the plastic bag ban, this is important to me, I want to make sure that if there are any issues that we're addressing them, so I would request that the, the, the board support, if not a goal, that they allow me as chair to, to review our policies, to seek input from the DCG and see if, and prevent, present the findings to the board.
I would support it. Do I need to make a motion to support it?
Yeah, if we're not gonna adopt it, I mean, you know, we didn't adopt it as a goal, I didn't want to just take it off the agenda, but I would like to pursue this.
I'll make a motion to support the chair to work with the DCG group to identify any issues with any of the policies.
Is there a second?
A second after discussion.
Mr. Carpenter, under discussion?
Well, I guess, I'm concerned that we're, we're splintering as a group into, we all have our interests, obviously, there are five of us, and there's everything that we would like to do, but I, I mean, I wasn't here when we agreed to adopt the goal, that's been a standing policy since before I was present, so, I mean, I think that as a board, it would be nice to work on something together. I don't know that I would support going off on something like this, because, again, my concerns were, we're asking DCG almost to do our work for us, and I'm sure that's not your intent, but that's, you're gonna be asking them a series of questions, they're going to now be taking time to look at them and, and come up with it. So I can't see supporting it, because I think as a board, we should be looking to work together. I think the plastic bag ban was something a little different, and my concern is, I don't want a prepackaged thing dropped in my lap at the end of the, at the end of this, I guess is my concern. And I kind of felt that the plastic bag ban, we were kind of forced into a set of actions that the board didn't agree to, and, you know, where we're at now, but I just don't want to be at that place again.
So I'll just say that I had a request, you know, I feel it's important that we review our policies, there's been issues with, even most recently, our outdoor entertainment policy, I think it's important that we continue in the vote, and the board did not adopt this as a goal, and I think it's important. I'm happy to have this referred to the, to the policy committee, but I think it's important work that we do, I think reviewing our policies is important, and having feedback from DCG is also important. Mr. Holstrom.
I would support this. I think the interpretation of the chairman going to DCG and getting that information, saying, you know, this is the way it's gonna be, I think what she would like to do is approach a DCG and let them take a look and have them make comments, and then bring it back here, and then we can take a look at it. So I don't think it's a one-person thing, and I don't think we're being splintered, I think it's a case of one person approaching a meeting, getting information, and sharing it back with us so that we can change our policies or make any revisions to them as we want. And I think that's my interpretation, so I would support this as written, and
So, so, so Mr., Mr. Berthew made the motion to allow the chair, but I had originally, and that's what it says, on the proposed goal, I am happy to work with anyone and make it a board item, I just feel it's important. I'm not looking to go off on my own, you know, and do it, but it's, but, but our responsibilities are licenses, and if we have an entertainment license policy that isn't working, we need to look at that. If we have any policy, if we have a liquor license policy that isn't working, we need to review it, we, we should be reviewing our own policies. Again, it's just, I'm not sure, like, how, you know, what happened at the time of our goals, but, again, I'm not, I'm not necessarily looking to do this by myself, but I'm not willing to completely drop it either, unless the board said, you know what, get over it, like, we're not reviewing policies. But, but whether we set it as a goal, or, or I do it, and so right now the motion is to allow me to do it, I would absolutely prefer that the board adopt it as a goal. Mr. Berthew.
I'll, I would like to amend my motion to say that I would move to allow the chair and any other board member that wishes to join her to reach out to the DCG for comments on these specific policies. Does that make sense?
Would that include a comprehensive review of all policies?
Yes, yep, that as written, but for the chair and any other board member that wishes to join you.
So it would be a separate subcommittee to, so Mr. Berthew, if I have this correct, you're making a motion to allow a subcommittee, of which would include the chair and another member, to perform a comprehensive review of all policies of the Board of Selectmen, and for any policies that go before DCG, to ask the DCG for comments about those specifically.
Can it only be one other member, or should I just put in any other member? The chair and any other member? Because you just said one other member.
Well, the thing is, if, if it includes another member, then anytime we meet, we have to post a meeting.
As a quorum.
Because of open meeting law.
Open meeting law. So you want to do it with one
I mean, even if it's a subcommittee, you have to post it, but, but now, I mean, you know, we can do it here if we're gonna, we can, we can, we can, we can have a whole meeting on just policies if, if that's what we want to do.
So we'll do it as you wrote, chair and one other member.
That's Mr. Berthew's
That would be my motion.
Amended motion, is, who seconded it? You did for discussion.
I won't.
Not under that. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so, Mr. La Liberty.
I just wanted to make a quick comment to the chair, that I don't think, I understand Mr. Carpenter's concerns, but I don't think that the board should really ever deny any person something that they want to pursue on their own, that they'll then bring back to the board, so I would have supported allowing the chair to go look at these on her own if that was her wish, but that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, and I appreciate the amendment to the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter, thank you. We've resolved our tabled items, everyone, while we're bringing some amendments back, but thank you. We have no more Board of Selectmen member items that were submitted, I just want to, because it's not discussion, it's not a vote, I just wanted to make a comment since we, since we did bring it up. Thank you to the board for supporting the, I wasn't here, but thank you for the board for supporting the proclamation for our Chester P. Tuttle Veterans Day event, and the acknowledgement of the 100th anniversary, hard to believe, the 100th anniversary of World War I. So we did it on last Thursday, and we did it on Monday, but I do, because we just celebrated Veterans Day yesterday, want to thank all of our veterans past and currently serving now for their service, so. There's no one here for additional public comment, does anyone have anything?
Just one thing.
Mr. Carpenter?
Because we have the business community, and I know Mr. Patukas had come before us a while back talking about trying to promote businesses and excellent experiences that people have, and I did note that the chamber did have their best, and I think at the time we suggested that we would have those winners in, so I don't know if people are interested in doing that, but an ongoing effort to support the business community, that seems like a simple thing to do for them and get them some publicity, and I'm sure Small Business Day is also coming up, usually it's the first weekend in December, so it would be good to remind citizens of that fact, too, that a lot of local businesses would have specials and other things available, and it might be a good idea to visit them.
Did you say that in the first week of December?
Typically. I mean, I can't, they decide it, the chamber decides.
So we'll put that on the next agenda
To invite the best
To, to
Winners of the best.
To invite the winners of the Best of Chamber, Best of Auburn Chamber event, and if, if those who come, come, if not, we can at least acknowledge the list, and we'll do that the first week of December, which is Small Business Week, did you say?
It usually is, yes. I would say if we do it in the last meeting in November, that'll give them a chance to hopefully
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda.
Give them some promotion ahead of the curve.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? We have the minutes of October 9th and October 22nd, are there any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, the chair will accept them as written. Is there a motion?
Let's do adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for being up late with us.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.